Welcome, everyone. I call the July 7th City Council Meeting to order. Mayor Polly and Councilmember Ray have excused absences tonight. Council President Walsh is attending the meeting remotely. Deputy I, Deputy Council President D. Michelle, will be serving tonight as Mayor Pro Tem. This meeting is being held one week later than normal due to the 4th of July holiday that occurred last week. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Before we get into the agenda, I'd like to suggest that AB 9040, Policy for Naming Public Facilities, Parks, Trails, which is under Regular Business, be postponed until the July 21st council meeting when we have full attendance. Is there any objection to postponing this item? Okay. Seeing none, this item will be postponed to the July 21st council meeting. Special Business Item ID 1883, Recognition of Tina Eggers, will also be delayed to a future meeting when the mayor can be with us. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
The next item of business is ID 1847, Parks and Community Services Month Proclamation, and Councilmember Martz is going to be presenting this. I'd like to invite Human Services Manager Brenda Parker and Park Planning and Development Manager Robin Spear to the lectern.
Whereas Parks, Recreation, and Community Services are an integral part of our community, and whereas Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental well-being of people who live near or recreate in parks, and whereas Parks and Community Services strengthen Issaquah's identity by providing exceptional parks, trails, green spaces, and recreation facilities that reflect and celebrate community, character, history, culture, aesthetics, and landscape; whereas Issaquah's Parks and Community Services provides value to the local economy through increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses and residents; meanwhile, the department strives to provide equitable human services to add value for all Issaquah residents. Now therefore, Mayor Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Parks and Community Services Month in the City of Issaquah, and we invite the community to join us in thanking the staff within the Parks and Community Services Department for their service and outstanding contributions. In witness thereof, she has herefore set her hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 7th day of July 2025.
Good. Okay. Well, good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Robin Spear, Park Planning and Development Manager, here with you tonight to help celebrate Parks and Community Services Department. On behalf of the Park Planning, Arts and Culture, and Operations Team, we truly enjoy being stewards of our parks and open spaces for a community that appreciates, supports, and recognizes our work, and it's fun for the team to be able to foster a quality of life that will impact generations to come. We appreciate your help. Now, Brenda.
I'm sorry. Hi, and I'm Brenda Parker, Human Services Manager. On behalf of my team, as well as the Recreation Teams, we want to thank you for recognizing the community services that we provide for Issaquah. Thank you very much.
So glad you were able to be here. Our next item of business is ID 1848, Disability Pride Month Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Roshni Karthikayan from the Kindering. She is a Kindering Communication Specialist to the lectern. This proclamation always holds a special place in my heart because I served for five years on the At Work Board of Directors and understand the importance of disability pride. So I'm very happy that you were able to be here with us. So whereas the Americans with Disability Act, or ADA, was passed by the U.S. Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, ensures that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history; and whereas disability pride fights against a history of stigmatization, shame, and isolation with self-determination and pride; and whereas the City of Issaquah acknowledges the barriers and challenges faced by individuals with disabilities, including societal attitudes, built-in architectural barriers, lack of accessibility, discrimination, and unequal opportunities; and whereas disability pride month is a time to celebrate the achievements, contributions, and resilience of individuals with disabilities in our community, and to promote inclusion, acceptance, and understanding of disability as a natural part of human diversity; and whereas we appreciate the efforts of disability rights activists, organizations, and advocates who work tirelessly to advance the rights, independence, and well-being of individuals with disabilities, and to create a more inclusive and accessible world for all. Thou therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, hereby proclaims the month of July 2025 to be Disability Pride Month. In witness whereof, she has herein too set her hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 7th day of July 2025. And Roshni, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Councilmembers and city staff. My name is Roshni Karthikayan, and I serve as the Communications Specialist at Kindering. I am here tonight on behalf of Kindering and as a resident of Issaquah to simply say thank you for recognizing Disability Pride Month. As you may know, Kindering is a local nonprofit serving children with disabilities, developmental delays, and other needs. We provide early supports, pediatric therapies, inclusive preschool, and more. Last year, we served over 100 young children from the City of Issaquah. So why is disability pride important to Kindering? It is important because we work with lots of wonderful little kids with disabilities who will grow up into wonderful adults with disabilities, and we want them to grow up into a world that supports, includes, and celebrates them. A Kindering parent shared, "Disability Pride Month is important to me as a parent because I want my son Gabe to grow up knowing that who he is, disability and all, is something to be proud of. I want him to feel confident, seen, and valued for exactly who he is." And that's what you are doing with this proclamation. You are sending a clear message to our families that you care about the kids now, and you will care about them when they grow up, and you will treat them with the respect and dignity that they deserve. We appreciate the city promoting disability inclusion in this small but powerful way. On behalf of Kindering, again, thank you. It means a lot.
The next item of business is Audience Comments. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you are on your phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
All right. I will read some guidelines for making comments, and then we will call on those who have signed up. For those making comments, you are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lectern in-person attendees, and the lectern is right there, the one in the middle. State your name and address or relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit comments to five minutes. And it doesn't say this, but you need to turn on your microphone, and when you press a little button, it becomes red, and then you know the microphone's on. If you are attending virtually, do not respond if your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly. The meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. Clerk, please identify the first person who has signed up to speak.
Chris Richley.
Mr. Richley.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. Madam Mayor, who's not here. My name's Chris Richley. My address is 2616 20th Avenue Northeast up in the Highlands, 11-year resident, also Economic Vitality Commission Chair of the city. Tonight, I want to begin by saying that I noticed in one of the proposed items for the Transit Oriented Development Project was commercial retail space. I want to begin by saying I agree Issaquah is in need of retail locations. That is clear through our feedback that we received on the commission through the business surveys, the public comments that we've heard throughout those processes around the Economic Development Plan. However, I believe including retail as a part of this specific project in this specific location is not practical. The area is already burdened with increasing traffic, and adding retail here could be that, could make it even worse, especially without adequate parking or infrastructure improvements, and realistically, what kind of businesses would thrive in that specific A few shops or a cafe may not be enough to truly address our retail needs or justify that space. One, on the other hand, I can speak from personal experience about the very real need for more childcare options. I faced a challenge of trying to find daycare for my daughters and stress that comes with it racing across traffic, making it on time there. It is in consistent pressure for working parents, and a daycare center near a transit-oriented hub makes more real differences in our people's lives than by easing the daily logistics and supporting families in a meaningful way. While I support the Retail is Right location, this isn't a place for it. A daycare center would make more far-sense valuable and realistic use of this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, is there someone else who has signed up to speak?
No one else has signed up in advance. We do have a few members of the public with us virtually, but I don't see any of them indicating a desire to speak.
Is there anybody else in the room? Yes, sir. Yes. Press the button. There you go.
Hi. Evening, Council. My name's Jim Hayes. I live with my wife and two kids and a dog on Busch Street, 585, kind of right at the elbow where all the high schoolers turn their cars too fast when trying to get to school. But I want to talk a little bit about the, or I want to share our family's perspective, I guess, around the transit-oriented development. I know that when, in conversations that I've been attuned to, which admittedly is not too many, a lot of the, a lot of the benefits described for folks who are already here is in the context of their children. I want to have a spot where my kids can afford to live in this town, which we love so well. So my family and I moved here in 2019, which, as I say it, I realize is six years ago, but it feels like it's only been, you know, about six months. But since we moved here, my, one of my brothers has followed me from Arizona to come here. Two of my stepbrothers or stepsisters have come, and they've found a place in Redmond where they're renting and actively looking. And when I think about what Issaquah is and means to our family and what it means to our extended family, it's important to me to think not just like 20 years on the road, 10 years on the road, when my 10-year-old and 11-year-old want to move, they'll move away, your kids, you know, but, but like my parents, my in-laws, like they're scattered around the country, they're getting older. We just buried my wife's grandfather and her father as well. It's a situation where we're seriously having to consider like, what do we do to be supportive to our parents who can't afford to get their own place in the real estate environment, in real estate environment that is here? And so my father-in-law has looked at like, hey, here's a spot a two-hour drive north where I can afford. It's like, wouldn't that be great? It would be closer to kids than Riverside, California. Sure, yeah, but still too far. And so when we think about what I, what makes me in favor of anything we can do to increase the affordability or the density is thinking about right now, the family that I want to have, and the choice that my family is fortunate enough to have, to leave if we need to, to be supportive to our parents. But I'd rather see what we can do to, to make things more possible for, to just be a magnet for people who we want to be around here. Like, I'd hate to have to leave because we have to take care of an ailing family member, and we can't find the right combination of transportation access and affordable living to join us here. So just wanted to share that other perspective, which is getting increasingly urgent day by day for me, my personal experience, as you consider what to do about the transit-oriented development and other density improvements. I'm very much in favor, even though I've got one of these houses on Busch Street, which I love dearly, so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in the, in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Not seeing any. We heard comments about the retail space proposal and childcare at the Transit Oriented Development, and then comments about the need for affordable housing in Issaquah related also to the Transit Oriented Development, and we really thank you both for being here tonight and giving us your thoughts. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, and the mayor does not, did not send any remarks for the Consent Calendar. Are there any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of the Consent Calendar items? Okay. Not seeing any. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have. And did Councilmember Ray? No? Okay. So thank you, Councilmember Joe. Is, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place here. Is there any, Councilmember, who would like to take something off the consent agenda for consideration? Not seeing any. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed in our agenda, consent packet as listed in our agenda this evening.
All right.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. And the next item of business is ID 1898, Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center, TOD OC Housing Cooperation Agreement. The City Council last considered this item at the May 5, 2025 City Council meeting. Tonight, the city is requesting additional feedback on the Housing Cooperation Agreement. This item is being brought to a regular council meeting rather than a committee of the whole meeting due to the timing. No action is being requested on this item tonight. I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, D. Michelle. Hi, I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, and pleased to bring this item before you tonight. With me is a whole team of people who've been working on this project, including Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority, who also has his architecture team with him, and Gillian Straub, who's our management analyst, who will also be taking part in the presentation. Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dollywall, is also available virtually for questions in case we need that planning perspective. So as Councilmember D. Michelle, you indicated we are not expecting action this evening. It's really to review the changes to the Housing Cooperative Agreement since it was last brought before council. We can talk about some of the progress and some of the additional things that we have found in our review of the permit application that we think make, make sense to go into the agreement from the administration's perspective, and also receive your feedback on any additional proposed items within the agreement. So direction needed tonight, specifically, there's a few items that we'll be talking about in a lot more detail, including tree retention requirements the administration is proposing to waive, also to reduce transparency requirements for the building, allow bike storage with limited transparency on the bottom floor, and also to waive the fifth-floor step back for the market rate building. You may recall, we discussed waiving the fifth-floor step back for the affordable housing building. We received some feedback from council about this item last time, that maybe we should apply it towards the market rate building as well in order to have the buildings look consistent to each other as they're both being developed on the same property. And so we're proposing that within the revised agreement tonight. There are many goals that we have associated with this project and have been since the beginning in 2017. Goals for sustainability, goals for affordable housing, goals for, even at one point to, I think it was discussed, to catalyze more redevelopment in the central Issaquah area. So there's a lot of goals that we're throwing into this project. One of the most important goals from the administration's perspective is affordable housing and increasing the affordable housing supply. And so I wanted to share this with you to offer some of our perspective as the administration on where we have kept our focus when we're negotiating this Housing Cooperative Agreement, as we really want to maintain as many units of affordable housing within this project as possible, and that's been our priority and our lens as we weigh and balance these other goals within the project. And as you can see from this slide, there's a lot of other city documents, planning documents, policy documents that also have that same goal of increasing affordable housing within the city. And so with that, I want to introduce Gillian, who will be talking a little bit more detail about the Housing Cooperative Agreement.
So we'll first cover all of the items in the agreement, and then most of the presentation will be focused on the items that are new since the May 5 meeting and a few items that have been adjusted. So you see here eight items. The first five were introduced at that May 5 meeting. I'll note that the first item has been adjusted to include both buildings are subject to a waiver for that fifth-floor step back for the consistency of look on the site. The next four items are the same as they were presented on May 5. And then the final three items were raised during the site development review process. The first round of review finished on June, in mid-June, and it raised some items where the plans didn't comply with our land use code as it was supposed to. Some of them could be addressed by the developer, but some items were prohibitive. So then we spoke with KCHA and proposed adding these three items to the, to the HCA for the same reason that the first five were added. Some of them might be cost prohibitive or in conflict with other goals. So those items are to waive the requirement to retain 25% of the tree caliper on the developable area of the site, to reduce the transparency requirement for the sides of the buildings facing natural areas from 50% down to a lower 20 or 30%, and then to allow bike storage facing the natural area with less transparency than would normally be required. So this table just lists those items again, whether they, they apply to the affordable building, the market rate building, or both, and if they may be subject to a future code amendment. This project highlighted a few items that our Community Planning and Development staff were already aware of or considering for future code amendments. Those will be taken up in 2025 and 2026, so the timing of those wasn't appropriate to wait. Rather, the Housing Cooperation Agreement was pursued as a way to ensure that this project could be built to city standards. And with that, or I'm sorry, one more slide. So from the May 5, 2025 City Council meeting, we received general support for the use of a Housing Cooperation Agreement for this project, and got some limited direction on the following items. First, exploring if there were additional sustainability features or certifications that the affordable building could pursue if it wasn't going to be LEED Platinum certified, if there was any way to mandate mixed use in the market rate building, and to ensure that the, the two buildings look and feel the same and are indistinguishable based on rental costs. So at this point, I'd like to invite up Dan Landis, the Vice President of Development from KCHA, to address these items, as well as the new items we just talked about.
Thank you, Gillian. I have been before you a number of times and have spoken to this project. I thought for a change tonight, we would listen to people who know what they're talking about. So I brought with me, or at least electronically brought with me, a couple of our consultants, including Maggie Carson from Weber Thompson, our architect, and Carissa Iris from Delta E., our sustainability consultant. So I'm going to turn it over initially to Carissa to talk to this first slide, and this is our response to the questions that were raised about whether, or how ESDS compares to Enterprise Green Communities and, and LEED.
Hi there. Can y'all hear me? Great. Thank you. My name's Carissa Iris, as Dan mentioned, and I'm the Sustainability Consultant and the Evergreen Coordinator for King County Housing Authority for the Affordable Housing Building. So we've done a lot of homework, exploring all of the options from LEED Platinum equivalency. We, and then we started to look into Evergreen Communities, Enterprise Green Communities as asked last, and, you know, wanted to bring up some points around the alignment there just with the Enterprise Green Communities. That's a fantastic certification, so much so that if y'all all didn't know, ESDS was actually derived from that certification protocol. So where Enterprise Green Communities is a national affordable housing standard, ESDS is our state-focused sustainable standard for affordable housing product, projects specifically. And why that's really great is it takes everything that's wonderful about Enterprise Green Communities and then adapts it for our local environment, for our local codes. And as you all know, with sustainability, local is best, right? And so I really love what ESDS has done, and just giving you that background because it, I think just the, the founding of ESDS really does highlight how aligned it is with Enterprise Green Communities. Where we wanted to, you know, talk about our path and what we've done to try to find ways to both satisfy the wonderful sustainable goals for this project, but also meet an affordable housing project's budget, is remain with ESDS because it's already state-required. So we don't have an option. We have to pursue that pathway. Adding an additional certification would just add essentially paperwork costs, and that's, that's, you know, out of alignment with, with the sustainable goal that we're trying to do here, which is pour as much money as we can into the project, doing good things, rather than me doing more documentation essentially. But through ESDS, we've charted a really great path. We've looked at Enterprise Green Communities and LEED Platinum and tried to pick some from everything. So we represent a very making sure that it's commissioned properly, through really amazing energy explorations. We're adding 20% more solar on this project than typical. We're doing a lot. So I don't want to just blather. I wanted to pause, see if there are any specific questions from the council members on this proposed path and how it aligns with the goals.
Great. Do any of the council members have questions? Council President Walsh, do you have any questions? No? Okay. No, I don't see any.
Thank you, Carissa. I would just want to add real quickly that some of you may be aware that there was a bill signed this past Friday that has some serious ramifications for the ability to fund solar work. And we have not given up the idea that we're going to overperform on the solar. It's just a lot more challenging now than it was. And so we're doing what we can to gear up quickly and potentially take care or take advantage of the last year or so that these credits are available. We're also exploring other options. So I just want to offer that as, at some point, we may need to scale back our solar just for financial realities, but we haven't reached that point yet. And our hope is that we can use the federal credits as we planned. So the next thing we wanted to respond to was about commercial use, and I'll ask Maggie Carson from Weber Thompson if she could jump in here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dan. Last time we met, there was discussion about adding a requirement for commercial use within that south building, the market rate building. As KCHA speaks the development partner, they will broach the topic with potential developers. But we want to give a little context to what that ask comes with. Adding retail can create financing obstacles and depends on the viability of the exact location. With no adjacent street retail to build synergy, the frontage on Newport or the core street may not actually be appealing to retailers. The addition of retail will also impact the efficiency and yield of residential, hurting a developer's performer. The code required height for retail spaces will take out units on both the ground floor and the floor above. Next slide, please. Issaquah's code requires 15 feet clear height for retail spaces. The building height is too tall to simply raise all the floors of the building to allow for a taller first floor. Instead, retail space on the ground floor will need to extend into Level 2, essentially providing double height space. For a developer, this means losing apartments on both the ground floor and the floor above. In terms of square footage, it means trading 2 square feet of rentable residential space for 1 square feet or 1 square foot of retail space. Next slide. In our last city council presentation, we talked about the challenges of stepping the building back within the upper wood level and how that creates structural, mechanical, and layout complications that impact cost and efficiency. In your discussion, you contemplated extending this exemption to the market rate building as well and allowing the south building to follow the same guidelines as the north building when it comes to mapping better ensures that the two buildings will feel and look similar. If we go to the next slide, we can see the images that we showed last time. These are the same images from the previous presentation, and they show the north building, but they're here for example's sake. The images on the left show the code required step back above the fifth floor, and the images on the right show the proposed design. And currently, the south building also follows that same proposed design with the step-back modulation happening at that lower floor. Next slide. We have a couple of new items, as everybody's mentioned, that we'd like to propose. Oh, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Hall has a question.
Yeah, thanks. If it's okay, I've got a question about the commercial space and then one about the step back really quickly before we go on to tree retention. So can you repeat what you said toward the beginning of the commercial space slide? You were talking about frontages, and it might not be appealing for retail. Can you repeat that?
Yeah. You know, frequently when we work with retailers, they're looking for spaces that have synergy with other retail nearby because shoppers are looking for easy access, easy visualization. And the more that's grouped together, the more convenient it is for somebody shopping. The current situation on Newport, there isn't really retail fronting onto that street. Everything else in the neighborhood is more inwardly focused, you know, with larger surface parking lots and things like that. And so putting some sort of commercial use fronting on Newport, while it would have good visibility, wouldn't have a lot of cross-traffic necessarily. And some retailers would see that as a downside to this particular state.
Okay. And so for this kind of cross-traffic that you're looking for, you would want to look for kind of recent, or I mean upcoming, cross-traffic because like the long-term plan for that area is there will be lots of dense development of mixed-use things. And I imagine there would be a lot of frontage or retailers fronting Newport in the different streets over there. So is the idea that you want to kind of plan for this kind of more immediate timeframe of if there's cross-traffic?
Yeah, that could be one good way of looking at it is, you know, since this is sort of the first development to take shape, it would be a struggle for this development in the short term. And like you said, maybe in the long term, as other sites redevelop and there is more street traffic and a greater revitalization of pedestrian traffic and retail in this area, then it might be something worth reconsidering. But in the short term, it would be hard for the financing and whatnot of the developer looking to be the first one in the neighborhood to redevelop.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And then for the expanded floor height that you were talking about, I just want to be clear. So if we did do that, it would eat into the second floor. That would mean a loss of units. Is that the impact you're describing? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then this one might be for staff about the step-back thing. So in the beginning, you had mentioned that bringing the step-back for the, or the reduction of the step-back of the fifth floor to both buildings because of consistency, which is something we said. I was just curious, was it that or was it this makes it easier for KCHA and developers to make the market rate building pencil out or some mix of both? Or is it really just more about kind of consistency of building type?
I would say it's all of the above. Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Maggie. This is Andrea Snyder. I would say from the city's perspective, what we are considering is making sure that those buildings are cohesive, that they look similar. That's been one of the goals that we've heard loud and clear from council throughout this process. And so while we had, you know, heard some community feedback that they liked the fifth-floor step backs and the aesthetics, keeping the buildings looking similar between the affordable building and the market rate building was something that we can do with the housing cooperative agreement. And so that's the main benefit the administration sees. Now, of course, that's also beneficial to KCHA as they look for a development partner for that market rate building as well because of all the reasons that they cited in the last meeting, that the upper-floor step backs create these other complications with design.
Okay. Thank you both very much. Thank you all very much.
Oh, and I do have a question as well. So, and maybe Andrea, this might be for you, too. So we heard tonight support for the idea of a daycare center or something like that. And would that be in, if we were to look for something along those lines, would that be in the Opportunity Center? Or where would we, would we be able to, I guess the question is, would we be able to accommodate that? And would a daycare center be considered a commercial purpose?
Daycare center would definitely be a commercial use. And I think that we're going, well, we're going to have a conversation with council later this month at the Committee of the Whole about the Opportunity Center and what our options are moving forward.
Oh, good.
So we can have that conversation at that time. As you may recall, originally with this project, a couple of years ago, we had anticipated perhaps a daycare center could be in the market rate building. I think the issue is with mandating a certain type of use like that. So not only mandating commercial, but then mandating one specific type of use, it's going to be really hard to find that tenant that's able to expand, you know, to move into that space at the timing that the building comes on and find a viable tenant to do that that's just one specific use. So I think that that's difficult to be able to narrow it down and then find the right tenant who's ready at the right time for that space. So Dan may be able to speak more to this, but it's certainly something that I think we can consider as we look at Opportunity Center. And we'd be able to provide a little bit more information about that at the Committee of the Whole later this month.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Jane?
So I'm very curious about this 15-foot retail height requirement. Does that apply to the Opportunity Center? Because, you know, the Opportunity Center, we are going to have some kind of ground floor uses like health services, social services. Are those also subject to this 15-foot requirement? And if so, how are we able to have more, you know, the same number of stories on that building?
So we essentially have two-story space on Maple for the Opportunity Center. So we did meet that by losing units up above. We also have some 50 units less than what the south building has. We can make a deal work for fewer units than a market rate can. But we do, so I guess the quick answer is our space could be retail space or any kind of commercial space in the north building.
That makes sense. Is this, so based on the, you know, picture in the slides, it looks like the height is like 12 feet and 8 inches. Is the 15-foot requirement for commercial space, is that like a common thing across all jurisdictions?
Maggie?
Yeah, I can speak to this. So in Seattle, the requirement is 13 feet, and that's measured floor-to-floor. So structure and mechanical space at the ceiling doesn't count against you. So the 13 feet is from the base floor up to the floor level of the next level. Hurcland is the same. They're also 13 feet floor-to-floor. Bellevue's requirement varies between different zones within Bellevue, but generally, they're around 13 feet as well. I believe some of their zones are actually 12, and some of their zones actually don't specify a minimum height.
I'm also wondering if Director Dollywall wants to weigh in on the 15-foot requirement.
This is Minnie Dollywall. You know, different cities, maybe the 13 feet is the way to go, but the basic premise of this, the space is to have flexibility for the retail to be a viable option. Because when mixed-use buildings were first coming along, one of the main things that they sat there not getting leased up, and one of the feedback that the retailers provided was the fact that these taller ceilings add to the experience of the people that come into shop and also for the businesses of stacking up stuff, having mechanical units and so on. So the taller building, taller ceiling heights do give flexibility for future retail uses as well. So it adds a little bit of flexibility. But whether it's 13, I think I saw Seattle's was 14, but, you know, I trust Maggie's done more recent search that it's 13. So it is common whether we are within 2 feet of each other, perhaps, that's something we can look at.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure if this is necessarily a question, but I think if the question is kind of about, you know, how do we make retail viable in our, you know, future vision of a mixed-use downtown core? If this height limit is preventing retail from being built in buildings above a certain floor, and, you know, it's because there's requirements with fire code and stuff that we really can't change, then is that, you know, minimum height of retail something that we could potentially look into in a future code amendment or as part of the housing cooperation agreement?
Yes, absolutely. And again, the Plan Development Environment Committee has been looking, I think, more broadly at some code issues that they'd like to bring forward to the full council. I think the chair is going to mention that when the current batch of code amendments come before the full council here in a couple of weeks. So that's certainly something we can look at in the future.
All right. Any further questions? All right, Dan.
Okay, Maggie.
We'll jump back in and we'll talk trees. So at this point, we're talking about new items being added to the housing cooperation agreement, and this first one is about the tree retention. The code specifies that we must retain 25% of the trees within the developable area, and that's key, that developable area piece. So the developable area does not include the wetlands or the right-of-way. So although we are retaining many trees, anything within the wetlands or the right-of-way does not count towards the retention. Within the developable area, there are 13 trees, and we're requesting we remove all of those. They're identified by those bright red dots on the screen. However, we are adding back in 52 trees in place of the 13. The new trees will vary in size and species, but will provide more canopy than what is being removed. The area within the wetland will preserve many of the large, older trees to maintain that established look and feel of the vegetation onsite. Next slide. The next item we are proposing being added to the HCA is regarding conditions facing natural context. In our pre-app meeting, we asked the city to clarify if the onsite wetland was considered natural context per the code. And at that time, further consideration was needed from the city, but we now have confirmation that the wetland along the western edge of the site at the bottom of the page here is essential natural context and results in a natural context zone for the west facade of both buildings. Also, proximity to Tibbetts Park results in a natural context zone for the south facade of the south building. Facades facing the natural context within the natural context zone have additional requirements, including greater transparency and specific uses. We go to the next slide. The code requires facades facing the natural context zone to be 50% transparent. While that sounds simple, the reality is really challenging to achieve, partly because Washington's energy code strives to limit glazing to only 30% and partly because much of the wall must be solid where interior walls and floors abut the exterior wall. Most of our affordable buildings land between 20% and 25% glazing, meaning 50% is asking for at least double the windows of what is typical. Doubling the glazing, especially on the south and west facades, which are the facades in question here, has a profound impact on both heat gain and loss. Compensating for increased glazing means adding more triple-pane windows, which are both heavier and more expensive, as well as reducing glazing on other facades to balance the overall building envelope. Providing 50% glazing on some facades and less than 20% glazing on other facades will look odd, but also creates equity issues between apartment homes. Lastly, the increased glazing impacts other building systems. Each apartment has air intake and exhaust requirements. The exhaust is limited on how closely it can be located to operable windows or to intake locations. Increasing the windows decreases the wall space available for the intake and exhaust and makes laying out the mechanical systems very, very difficult. Similarly, some of the exterior walls are structural shear walls, which cannot easily accommodate more glazing without diminishing their structural capacity. We go to the next slide. The image here shows the west facade of the north building. The white areas show the current planned openings at 19%. The hatched areas show how much of the wall would need to be made transparent to reach 50%. We would like to propose the west facade be increased to 20% to better meet the energy code, affordability, ease of construction, and efficiency of mechanical and structural systems. Next slide. The image on this slide shows the west facade of the south building. Again, the white area shows the current planned opening, in this case, 35%, and the hatched areas show what the transparency would be at 50%. I'd like to point out that we don't have a market rate development partner yet, but it's very likely they will ask us to reduce transparency to avoid significant triple-pane windows, just like the north building. We would like to propose the west facade of the south building also have a 20% minimum. It's possible the market rate building will 20% minimum. It's possible the market rate building will opt to provide slightly more. We do typically see transparency between 25 and 30% on our market rate building, but we think for all the same reasons mentioned previously, and to ensure the buildings look similar and feel equitable, the west facade of the market rate building should have the same minimum requirement. Next slide. And then lastly, this is the south facade of the South Building, which is also within a natural context zone because it faces Tibbetts Park. Here, the current transparency is 29%. We would like to propose a minimum 30% glazing on the south facade, which is still within the limits of the energy code, but does ensure more glazing facing the park. This facade is not directly comparable to the North Building, which reduces the concern about the buildings looking the same. Next slide. The second item that's related to natural context zone is the location of the bike room. Technically, the bike room is considered storage, and storage uses are limited on natural context frontage. We would argue, though, that the bike room is more like a resident amenity instead of basic storage. We placed the bike room here because it's conveniently located adjacent to the lobby and directly next to the through-block bike path. In other KCH properties, the bike room is heavily used by residents, and we anticipate it being the same here, making the bike room an active and engaging portal between inside and outside. Glazing is limited to higher windows in order to allow for bike racks along the wall and for security of the bikes themselves. Next slide. And here you can see a perspective looking at that frontage. At the far left is the entry vestibule for the lobby. Close to kind of the middle of the page is the glass door leading into the bike room. And towards the right, you can see the higher windows that are up above the wall-mounted bike racks. The wall below is obscured by landscaping and elements of the landscape design, including short-term bike parking, which sort of directly ties the interior and exterior environment together. And that, that concludes sort of an overview of the new items that are being proposed, and I think it goes back to Andrea at this point to talk through next steps. Or I can answer questions, either one.
Do any councilmembers have questions? Okay, councilmember, or Council President Walsh? Okay, no, I don't see any questions.
I'll just conclude by, this is the schedule that we're, we're hoping to stick to, that we get our building permit next May, we start construction shortly thereafter, and that in early to mid 2028, we will place the building in service and start welcoming residents and the Opportunity Center tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So that brings us back to a specific direction we're seeking from you this evening, is, does the City Council agree with the administration's recommendations to add the items to the HCA, including waiving tree retention requirements, reducing transparency requirements, allowing bike storage with that limited transparency, and waiving the fifth-floor step-back for the market rate building to match the affordable building?
Thank you. And just a reminder, we're not voting tonight, we're just giving feedback. So, would somebody like to start with the feedback?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So, so I'm still wrapping my head around this transparency thing. So, just to be clear, we have set a 50% transparency, which is in conflict with state energy code, is that right?
So, yeah, and perhaps Director Dollywall wants to speak to this, because I know that as she was looking at what our code requires in 50% transparency, that she also has an interest in taking another look at that and making modifications on a more permanent basis. That, that would apply to other developments, because 50% transparency is a lot. So, the energy code is a little bit different in that it talks about, I believe, it talks about glazing, which is similar to transparency, but not exactly. And now I'm venturing into the land of planning, which maybe is dangerous for me to go. So, I can, I can let Director Dollywall speak to this maybe a little bit better.
Sure, Andrea. So, yeah, the 50% is just a land-use code requirement, so that's a council decision to set it at whatever it needs to be. That is on our list to look at with the next annual update. Having a, you know, a hardwired number is, is good, but if it's in conflict with other codes, then we certainly want to look at it. In terms of the energy code, you know, there are two paths for that. One is you're prescriptive, you pick the 30%, you're good. Energy codes have gotten very complex with the recent building code updates through all of that. There is a performance method in which you can, you know, it's not a hardwired 30%, there's other ways to do, do the calculation based on floor areas and so on and so forth. So, however, I think the easiest path for people to pick the prescriptive method would be the 30%. Again, Isicua's context of being in the setting, the idea was to not have blank walls along, along natural areas, and to actually have that context piece. It comes from design standards that were previously in, in the books. So, we'll certainly add it in our next year's amendments to take a look at it, potentially, as long as the intent is met of not having blank walls along natural context, that there's flexibility on the percentage piece that can be handled through the design review process.
Okay, thank you. I can just share some comments if you want to.
I just want to check, Councilmember Jane, did you have a question or a comment? Oh, okay, let's, well, you know something, I, I have a question, and then I will go to comments. So, so this is just a general, you know, I heard you refer to the fact that the PVE Committee is going to take up a packet of changes, and I'm just wondering, are we, is there any chance to add or, or add to that package, or what is exactly the process we're going to go through to make these code amendments, which I think are really important? And we've learned a lot from this project, but I'm just wondering about the community input into that and so forth. So, can you just speak to that a little bit?
For, for the future code amendments, so certainly we can take some of that feedback this evening, if there's specific things that council would like for us to look at, and then, and then, you know, I would invite Director Dollywall to make any further comments. But I think part of this is, we're going to have to figure out, there's a lot of code fixes that we've identified with the old whiteboard and other items, the Title 18, our land use code. So, we still need to prioritize at this point, as you are aware, our planning staff are woefully understaffed, and so there is a limited staffing capacity. What is good about this project is certainly it's highlighting some of these areas of our code that we want to make sure work for redevelopment and encourage the type of redevelopment that we want to see in the central Isicua area. So, perhaps City Administrator Bob Quitz can speak to this, but I would imagine that we would love to hear your feedback on what other type of code fixes you'd like to see, and then we'd have to perhaps prioritize for staff capacity.
And if I may add, Madam Mayor Portem, the Planning Development Environment Committee has had at least a first iteration of this discussion, and they plan to bring that up again when they bring the code amendments, the ministerial code amendments that have already been through Planning Policy Committee. That's coming up on the 21st of July.
Okay.
So, I don't want to steal Chair Hall's thunder any further.
Okay, thank you so much. So, let's go to comments from Councilmember Hall, and then Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, and just to add to that, too, like, that was, at the last council meeting, I said, when that comes back from Planning Development Environment Committee, we're going to have a bit of a trade-off conversation, kind of building off what Deputy City Administrator was saying around. We have a lot of work going on in the planning development, community planning and development already, right? So also just kind of being able to recognize that and prioritize it at council. So, I'm looking forward to that conversation. I'll definitely add some of the things that have come up tonight to that list that we talk about as council. Just in terms of direction, first and foremost, thank you for being so responsive to needs from KCHA, from sitting down and really trying to understand how are we going to make this work, how are we going to deliver on this important community promise in our community that are, that is so aligned with our vision and our goals, and that North Star of making as many affordable units as we can. So I appreciate you kind of highlighting that right at the very beginning as well. There's nothing that I've seen today that I'm concerned about in terms of creating space for consistency between buildings, making it easier to pencil out, understanding the challenges around natural areas and transparency and all this. So, just from kind of a high-level perspective, nothing that I see here that I would, that I would warn us from, from going down too much further. So when this comes back to council, I'd like to see, I'd like to see these. And just like as some of councils already kind of alluded to, I'm interested in having that conversation around the commercial height. I think that's an interesting one, whether or not that happens in this, or we have kind of a trade-off conversation. Because I, we also, like you said, our North Star is number of affordable units. We don't want to like eat into those units as well, too. So maybe we frame up a discussion, but maybe that's more for a code amendment for general Title 18 later on for us to have a conversation about. But those are just some of my kind of general thoughts, and if you want to get more specific on anything, go back for two comments.
Okay, Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I want to echo everything that Councilmember Hall said. I think, you know, waiving the fifth-floor step-back for the market rate building is really important to make sure that the two buildings look as similar as possible. And also, another thing to note is that, you know, King County Housing Authority hasn't financed, hasn't finalized the financing stack for this. So they're going to come to, you know, Arch and to the City of Isicua with a request for the amount of money from our, you know, inclusive housing investment pool, from Arch's Housing Trustman that we're going to put in, and if they're able to get a higher price for the market rate development, because there's, they're reducing the cost of building it by giving this exemption, that directly results in saving the taxpayers of Isicua money in terms of getting this project built. So, I'm super in favor of this. I think, you know, in terms of the transparency stuff, you know, figuring out how that works with the state energy code as those requirements are getting more stringent is really challenging, and so I look forward to seeing how that discussion comes up in the coming months.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Andrea, first, thank you for putting this all together and coordinating it so that we could have it in a good, solid package that we could analyze carefully. Echoing what Councilmember Hall says, I don't have any objections about any of the questions that are up there. I was a little bit concerned about the waiver of tree retention requirements initially. However, with the information tonight that the green space that's already there will keep the trees, I feel better about removing some of the trees on the site and allowing those trees that are already there kind of stay in a glade, or at least a clump of trees that support each other. We find that when we, when we take out trees sometimes, then it opens up to wind damage, they can get knocked over because they don't have that support around them with the other trees. So, keeping that, that natural area with all the trees there, I think is going to be a good long-term solution and still keep a, a natural feeling to that area with the tree retention that still is being required. So, I won't repeat all the other comments, but, but I think this is a good package going forward. Thank you.
Right. Council President Walsh has her hand up, so please go ahead.
Thank you. I think I'm going to end up echoing much of what we have heard. I, I think it's just really important for us to recognize that getting an analysis from a nonprofit affordable housing developer really here showed us, we have a lot of challenges with our adopted code, that can make building essentially impossible, you know? If we've got this idea of having a lot of transparency, but then the building code says you shouldn't have as much glazing, that, these are really concerning areas for me that we are seeing in this case, and I really do want to make sure that we bring them up. I would also say the two remaining items that are not proposed in this proposal for the market rate building, I would be comfortable with adding in, they're not deal breakers for me, but the outdoor amenity space and substituting the ESDS for lead platinum. I think particularly with the ESDS for lead platinum, our consultant made a good point that if you're already having to do that, all the lead platinum requirement on that is just adding extra paperwork. And so, I think the idea of simplifying and now that we've looked at what that truly does require and provide, I think is easily something that I would say our community would support. So, in general, I appreciate that we have done this. I think all of these adjustments are good for both the affordable and market rate.
Councilmember Martz?
Thank you. I'm going to say it a little bit differently than everybody else today. I'm going to quote Jane Austen, and, and I'm going to say, from Pride and Prejudice, what Jane Bennett said to Mr. Bingley, "Yes, yes, a thousand times yes. This project is desperately needed." It was desperately needed 10 years ago when he first started talking about it. It's been desperately needed in the intervening years. The biggest thing to me today is not these issues which are well-presented, it's the idea that they would start in next year to actually building this. That's what's important, that's what needs to get done. I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with all these things, full speed ahead, bias for action is what they say at Blue Origin. It's, 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 it's been too long. So I hope that, I hope that this is really, I hope that we're close, right? We've, we've had all sorts of great conversations over the years, so, and yet, that lot sits forlorn and, and unloved. So, you know, I'm an ardent suitor like Jane Bennett from, from 2005's Pride and Prejudice. So let's, let's get going. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Before I give my comments, any other comments from follow-up? Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I also wanted to touch on the sustainability standards. So one thing that kind of came up when we were looking at the sustainability standards are that, you know, the City of Isicua is unique in that it requires all buildings, all residential buildings to be lead platinum, and whereas most other cities and programs give you a menu of different similar certifications to pick from, so for example, you know, EGC Plus, which we've talked about, Passive House, there's a variety of them. And so one thing that I would also love us to look at in the land use code is seeing, you know, how can we expand that definition to encompass these different sustainability certifications, which for all intents and purposes are basically similar, it's just different companies' version of the same product, so that we can give more optionality to, you know, people who want to build environmentally-friendly buildings but don't have experience with the specific type of paperwork. So.
And Councilmember Hall, did you want to say something else? All right, let me go ahead, and then we can come back. Okay. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to echo everybody, and particularly Council President Walsh's comments. This process has absolutely surfaced some issues that we really have with our code and that we, we need to address. I agree with Councilwoman Martz, this project itself is urgent, and I don't want to put any roadblocks in its way. So, what I would be looking at is future code amendments and not stopping this project to start making fixes at this point. My, I have a couple of specific, the tree retention requirements, long, long, long time ago, when Leon Cost was City Administrator, I served on a committee that looked at our tree retention requirements. So this is a kind of a special, and I was really surprised to learn that, that the tree retention requirements could actually stop a project. So, that one is a special. I would really like us to talk about how we make that. We all agree we want our tree canopy, but we, we also need affordable housing, we desperately need that. So that would be one of my special areas of attention. The other thing I'm really concerned about is we've surfaced a number of items here. We surfaced a number of items with a previous project that did not go through, and I am just hoping that we will have some kind of process where we ask the developers in our area if they will have further additions so that we can do a comprehensive amendment process, so that instead of coming back and then having to go back a year from now, and then another year from now, that maybe we do a more comprehensive look and see if we can really get a list of things that need to be changed, so that developers come in here and feel that they can really, that it's- here and feel that they can really, that it's, as they say, pencils out to build housing and build affordable housing in Issaquah. So that is, that would be, one of my concerns is the process that we're going to go through to do the amendments and making sure we get a lot of input into that process. So I see that Councilmember Martz wants to add something.
Well, I want to be careful that what developers hear from us tonight. I am an ardent suitor of this project because this particular project creates an immense benefit to our community. And I want to be really clear that we have at times in the past, not associated with this project, seen requests for all sorts of essentially variances from developers for very small community benefits. And so I want to be super, super clear that my assessment, as one of seven, is not that it is Old West, you know, free-for-all on development standards, but rather, you know, my sense is that this council, when presented with substantial benefit to the community, is willing to consider what we need to do to help make that happen. But what I don't want to see is like 2% of the units at 98% of market rate, and we're supposed to bend over backwards and provide all sorts of changes and diminishment of standards that we've cared about. So I just want to caution that, I agree with the body this evening, that some of the issues that were brought up this evening are very important and are worth considering more broadly as to where our code is. But I personally am not, I've seen too many times over the last 15 years where developers have come in and offered extremely modest, extremely thin amounts of public benefit, and then expected us to do all sorts of dancing and gyrating for it. And that won't happen going forward, at least, again, as one of seven. Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, City Administrator Buckwitz.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Let me just say a couple of words from the administration's perspective on this, because certainly this has been discussed, the planning, development, and environment. Mayor Polly's very concerned about community input, that Title 18, when we did the major revisions, we went to many of our boards and commissions, we had discussions with the community members, we tested things. And I think she would want me to say this evening, her concern for caution as changes are looked at, that we go back to the community. It's important to hear from developers, certainly we want to see housing developed, but it's also important to hear from the community, our various boards and commissions that we charge to mine these matters. And so, and I keep saying I don't want to steal thunder, Chair Hall, but, you know, one of the things that the committee talked about, the Plan Development Environment Committee talked about, was coming up with a comprehensive list and doing that during the fall, so that in January with the new mayor, new council, we'll have that, those lists ready to go and have that group then decide a path and not wait for that. The committee discussed, you know, kind of played through the logistics of having a community dialogue this fall with our boards and commissions, and just looking at a calendar, that's just going to be very, very difficult. But what the committee, Plan Development Environment Committee can do is bring together the various lists that we've had, do some prioritization, perhaps ask the council to have either part of a scheduled committee of the whole, or have another committee of the whole, to talk about this so that we are ready to go in January to have those community discussions, meet with developers, however the mayor and council direct, and be ready to go then. But Mayor Polly's very concerned that as we talk about this, we talk about developer needs, she's concerned we don't talk enough about the community's desires and all of the hours and hours and hours that have been spent by community review, board and commission review of what is in Title 18. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually think we're all on the same page. I just wanted to be sure that the idea of doing a comprehensive look appeals to me much more than doing a patchwork this year and a patchwork two years from now and so forth down the line. So that was the purpose of my comments.
All right. Any other, any other comments here? Oh, sorry, Council President Walsh.
Thank you, waving my hand over here. I just want to be clear that when we are looking at potential changes to our code based on what this nonprofit developer has discovered for us, these are not giveaways to developers. We are not putting in incentives here or gifts to folks because they're providing a community benefit when we're talking about a wider potential scope of these things. These are fixes to barriers for development. And I agree, we should absolutely discuss this with the community. We know the community values environmental sustainability and climate action and all of those things. I do think it's important to recognize that if the community was presented with something that says 50% window transparency, do you want that, without the information that says, look, that would make it not work for the energy code, can give us a bad result, which is that development and housing isn't viable. And so, very important to go back to the community with this information, but make sure that we are presenting not false choices, but rather things that will equitably bring about the housing that our residents and employers desperately need.
Thank you. Any other comments?
All right, we have a question here before us also that wasn't on the list, and that is, do you have any preference on whether this item returns under consent or the regular business at the July 21 meeting? Is that correct, the July 21 meeting? Any input there?
Is there anything you heard tonight that might make you think this would be better, like there'll be a change, it might be better on regular business than consent?
I don't believe we anticipate any major changes at this point.
Okay. And no preference?
No preference, okay. I am not seeing, I think that...
So we'll go ahead and put on consent?
Yes.
The council's had a full discussion this evening.
Right. I see Council President Walsh's hand is up again. Do you have a concern there?
No, sorry about that, I didn't lower it earlier.
Oh, okay, yes, I think the consent agenda then would be appropriate. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes.
I would love to correct a statement that I made earlier, which is that when we were talking about the Opportunity Center discussion, that's not anticipated for the committee of the whole this month, but rather Safety Services and Parks Committee. So I apologize for misspeaking. So I, for anybody following along this item who wanted to attend that meeting, it's the Safety Services and Parks Committee, and I'm sorry for that error.
Oh, thank you so much for the clarification. The next item on the agenda again, AB 9040 has been postponed to the July 21 meeting, so we will proceed to committee and regional reports next. Councilmember Jank.
I have no report for today.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. In Councilmember Ray's absence, I'll announce that the Fourth of July Commission will be meeting on July 14. One of the items on the agenda is looking at the potential new logos for the commission and the celebration. They'll be doing some board training and a debrief on the Fourth of July parade. July 18, the Chamber Board is meeting, and as liaison, I'll be giving a report to the board about our current action here at council and other goings-on in the city that they might be interested in. July 15 is Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting. No agenda's been set yet, but tune in on the website if you're interested in going to that meeting. July 23, Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting. The Public Affairs meeting, however, for Cascade Water Alliance on July 2 was canceled. July 28, the LTAC Committee will be meeting at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Location to be determined. And that concludes my July report for all my committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hall.
No report this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting this Wednesday, July 9, at 7:00 PM for an online meeting, and I am sort of thrilled to announce we actually have something juicy to discuss. So wanted to bring up with council, we will be considering taking emergency action on a recommendation on the King County Transportation District's sales tax proposal. Let me read you the first and last paragraphs of the draft letter that we have for Council Member Claudia Balducci, KCTD Chair. "Sound Cities Association is writing regarding the proposed 0.1% sales tax by the King County Transportation District, KCTD. Given the range of scheduled taxes this year and limited engagement to date, we are concerned about the timing and development of this funding proposal. With state and federal fiscal uncertainty, the proposed KCTD sales tax does not fully account for broader economic risks. While we understand and appreciate the deep and longstanding need of the county's local roads and transit, we urge that any new tax be delayed, allowing time for alternative, revenue options to be thoroughly explored, and policy priorities to be developed in partnership with local jurisdictions." Then there's a bunch of supporting language. Finally, "The 38 jurisdictions of Sound Cities believe that the proposed KCTD sales tax should not be pursued this year, and that any new revenue will be more successful with increased collaboration between King County and local jurisdictions. More time would allow for more thorough analysis of geographic needs, looking at alternative or additional revenue sources, and the development of appropriate solutions for a balanced approach to raising revenues that benefit the entire transportation system for the region." So that is the draft language that will be in front of the Sound Cities Association on Wednesday. I bring this up to you because if anyone, if we as a body decided that we had problems with that language, I would of course not be supporting it, the way SCA used to work and is working again now as we bring these things to the municipalities and hear people out. So if anybody has any concerns about that or questions they would like me to bring up with Sound Cities on Wednesday, now would be the time. And I'm not seeing any...
Well, yeah, maybe you could ask for us. I'm just curious like how long they've been considering this proposal. I haven't heard of this before. Are the King County doing this?
Yeah, it came up quickly, that's why we're looking at emergency action. Historically, there have been challenges with, things come up at the county quickly, and we aren't, historically, in the last couple of years, we haven't had the time to respond to these things. This is the first one in some time that, and again, we would have to take emergency action. Emergency action requires 85% of the body to agree that an emergency is there, and then the actual vote on this motion would require a two-thirds majority.
All right, thank you.
All right, oh, and I have one other thing, lest we not forget, as the deputy city administrator pointed out, we do have a Services Safety and Parks meeting Tuesday, July 22, which is technically beyond our next council meeting, but I'll mention it anyhow, 6:30 here in council chambers. And yes, on the agenda is the status of the Opportunity Center project, as well as a status on the Three Trails Art Project proposal using recent grants from Washington Legislature. This concludes my report.
Very exciting, very exciting. I do not have a report. Council President Walsh, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
All right, very good. The mayor did send in a report, which I will read to you. First of all, there is no executive session this evening. Secondly, Mayor Polly's sister-city exchange trip to Sundal, Norway. Mayor Polly recently visited Sundal, Norway, Issaquah's sister-city of more than 30 years, to strengthen international ties and celebrate the enduring friendship between the two communities. These sister-city exchanges foster cultural understanding, promote collaboration on shared challenges, and open doors for educational and economic opportunities. By connecting with Sundal's leaders and residents, Mayor Polly reaffirmed the value of global partnerships in building a more connected and resilient Issaquah. And I have been to Sundal, and it is a wonderful, wonderful little salmon village on the western side of Norway, and it's just absolutely lovely. So I'm sure she had a wonderful time. And the people are very friendly. Upcoming events, Concerts on the Green kicks off. It's concerts time in Issaquah. Come down to the Issaquah Community Center lawn every Tuesday to listen to danceable tunes for the whole family. The concerts run from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM every Tuesday through August 19. Harvey Manning's 100th Birthday Celebration. The Issaquah Alps Trails Club is hosting a celebration to honor Harvey Manning's 100th Birthday and lasting legacy of trail and conservation advocacy. This family-friendly event features outdoor activities, a scavenger hunt, a short speaking program from local conservation leaders, including a special presentation by Senator Victoria Hunt. This event takes place at the Community Center lawn near the Harvey Manning statue on Wednesday, July 9, from 6:00 to 8:00. Bring the family and a picnic to enjoy this family-friendly gathering. And then Gas Station Blues start on July 10, so there's lots going on in downtown Issaquah. The Downtown Issaquah Association and the Washington Blues Society bring Gas Station Blues back to Issaquah for its 11th year. Grab your lawn chairs, blankets, and dancing shoes and head down to the Historic Shell Station every Thursday night from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM through August 28 to listen to a variety of talented blues musicians. Visit the Downtown Issaquah Association's website for the full lineup of musicians. And the next item of business is Good of the Order. Does anyone have Good of the Order? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Just wanted to let people know that the farmer's market this weekend on July 12, they will be, they recycle different things every week, but this week in particular, they're taking plastic film, so think of the dry cleaning plastic you've got stored away in your closet and other films like that. They're hard to recycle, and so I encourage people to go to the farmer's market and bring them there, and they'll take them. They always take batteries. The batteries need to have a tape piece over the top so that they don't leak and cause problems. You're more than welcome to bring those, too, by on the 12. Also, don't forget the chamber event, the Issaquah Chamber event at Booms Chocolates on the 10th at 5:30 PM. If you're interested in attending, I think there's still some spots open. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else for Good of the Order? I am just going to mention that I attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference in the Tri-Cities area, and it was a really excellent conference. I did send out notes to, that were distributed to the council. Want to highlight sessions they had on the future of energy grid, which was excellent, talking about what the tri-city areas are doing in that regard, which is really progressive cybersecurity. Thanks to the city administrator for gathering information about our cybersecurity efforts, which are excellent and really way ahead of what a lot of cities are doing in terms of cybersecurity. A very excellent presentation on short-term rentals and the impacts of those on, which is Airbnb, basically, those on affordable housing and how some cities are really struggling with those. And then the last presentation, which was just outstanding, was the cities of Baldon and Medical Lake on the wildfires that ripped through their communities about five years ago and the recovery efforts that they've participated in. Baldon lost over 150 houses. Amazing. The city was basically just completely devastated, and they're doing a wonderful job of recovery. So those were great things to think about. And again, I think we're on the cutting edge of a lot of those discussions. So I felt very good about what we're doing in Issaquah and all of those things. The other announcements, the city council retreat will be held this Saturday, July 12, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the King County Library System Service Center. The July 14 Committee of the Whole meeting is canceled. And the next regular city council meeting is Monday, July 21. Anticipated agenda items include public hearing on vacation of a portion of 12th Avenue Northwest, 2025 Title 18 policy amendments, update of impact and mitigation fees, Bellevue College Development Agreement extension request, and finally, the transit-oriented development Opportunity Center TODOC Housing Cooperation Agreement. Before I adjourn the meeting, is there anything else that anyone would like to bring up? Right. All right, there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:30 tonight. There we go, oh, good. Wow, okay. There we go.